Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, May 21st, 2007. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Next item on our agenda is the disposition of minutes. You have before you the minutes of the regular session held April 16th, special session held April 30th, and regular session held May 7th. Member Wild.
Adoption of minutes of April 16th, 30th, and May 7th.
Second. Motion and second, further discussion.
I know one of the minutes has a discussion about the Relay for Life, and I have not heard any complaints about it from this weekend, so.
Any other comments on the minutes? All those in...
Well, if he's going to comment on Relay for Life...
Oh, I see, a new...
No, I just will comment as well, because you've heard me say many times that this is one of the students' shining moments, and to raise $88,000 in an evening for cancer is amazing.
It is phenomenal, in a town of this size, it really is. Incredible work. All those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been accepted. Under communication, I am in receipt of several letters that I'm going to acknowledge, but I'm not going to read into the minutes. They will be available for review if anyone wishes. Kelsey Mathias of the Plains has sent us a letter commenting and somewhat angry over the closing of Columbus Road, and seems to be of the opinion that the city of Athens is responsible for that. I have spent a lot of time on the phone with quite a few different business owners out on Columbus Road, and I assure you that it was not the city of Athens, it was ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation, that has chosen the timing on that. Both the Chamber of Commerce and others had tried to work with that, may assure us in the future they will try to be cognizant of Ohio University's calendar, but we'll see. Also in receipt of a letter from Patricia Pruitt that I have shared with other council members, commenting on the city pool's restrooms and their level of cleanliness, and we will pass that along. And some compliments from Ann Trin on the Athens transit system, and suggesting that instead of every hour, the buses run every half hour. We'll pass that along to the Transportation Committee, or Carol Patterson, to review her comments when her committee next meets. And one from Jeff Wood in favor of the proposal to change the zoning at the end of Court Street, that is ongoing discussions. So those are the communications that I am in receipt of. Are there any other communications that any council member wishes to share? I understand...
Bill?
Member Wild?
Yeah.
You want me to just introduce? Okay. I understand that Paige Alas...
Alas.
Alas, I always mispronounce your name, I'm sorry, wishes to speak to us tonight. Paige is from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and would like to report to us.
Good evening. I'm asked by Fajica Bishop and by Carol Patterson to talk with you for a few minutes about Halloween. As many of you know, at the end of winter quarter, several student groups, both through the School of Journalism and the College of Business, centered their quarter studies around researching the Halloween Street Festival and offering some alternatives to that. By the way, I have brought those projects with me, and you know what our budget is, so I did not make copies of that for everyone, but they are here. And if we can leave them with Debbie, then you guys will have a chance to look at them during the week and kind of refer to them, based on the information that we've provided to you. So what we've done is come up with sort of a meltdown of those three present... or those six presentations into three options for you to consider. And of course, I'm going to start this by saying that the primary consideration before you right now, in all the discussion about Halloween, is about ownership. We know that Halloween is something that has just sort of happened for just sort of the last 30 years or so. And with all the discussion that's taken place regarding the fence and other issues around Halloween for the last couple of years, you guys have raised the question about the future of Halloween in your council meetings on numerous occasions. And so of course, the big question is, who owns it? And right now, of course, what you'll see is the first option is the Halloween status quo. And that is, you continue to block the streets, and a group of volunteers, the Athens Clean and Safe Committee, Halloween Clean and Safe Committee, continue to set up two stages, organize 10 bands, take in a small amount of sponsorships to help cover their costs, and provide some entertainment for the people that attend the festival at night. And when we say status quo, we really mean that that's just kind of what it is. There's no other specific ownership that can occur by the city at that point, and no hope to ever incur any revenue associated with Halloween, other than that of your vendor license, your parking fees, and the things that you normally take in right now. So with that being said, we have incorporated into that first plan, Halloween status quo, the option of some improvements in there, based on some suggestions that the students have made. I will tell you, we've had a lot of great meetings with Jonathan Holmberg, who serves as sort of the lead on Halloween right now. And he is very open to a lot of these suggestions, and we're very open to continuing to work with Jonathan to sort of facilitate. I do want to remind you, the Visitors Bureau is not experts in event planning, we're experts in event marketing, that's two different things. But we will continue to work with Jonathan to facilitate some of these changes that you see there. So what you see listed on there as part of the Halloween status quo is the addition of some events that continue to bring the community into what Halloween is doing, and some alternatives for them to generate additional revenue, primarily in the way of sponsorships. I will say, it is time for our Halloween sponsors to step up, especially those that make money off of Halloween and contribute a little more to Halloween, not just in finances, but also in their commitment to making Halloween clean and safe, and something that the entire community can continue to enjoy. We also are looking for service organizations. This is a call to action under Halloween status quo to say, you know what, if you're interested in fundraising, and you want to set up a vendor booth, or you want to host an auxiliary event associated with Halloween, the street's already blocked, come and talk to us, come and talk to Jonathan, and see what it is that can be done. That gives a community organization a chance to fundraise, and it also offers, again, an auxiliary event tied to Halloween. So the other options and objectives there listed under Halloween status quo are there for you to review. Under Plan Two, this is something that was represented in almost all of the student reports, and that was a consideration for a more concise management structure and ownership by the city. And when I say ownership, we really mean responsibility. We really mean that, okay, we're not just going to talk about what we want Halloween to be, we're going to view it as an economic developer, a chance to generate additional revenue, not just incur the expense, but a chance to really, over the course of three or four years, develop Halloween into something that generates revenue for the city. This will require, of course, a paid person in order to administer that. And you'll see the management structure listed there, as a special events planner, not just for Halloween, but of course, you know, there are lots of other events that take place in the city of Athens, in which a key person on your staff would be helpful, especially to an organization like ours in the Chambers, and those other festivals that take place could use a key person on the city to contact. It also includes a task force, that includes the mayor's office and the city council, the police department, the city safety office, the Clean and Safe Committee, and Ohio University Student Senate, or whatever other student organization wants to remain as the contact. And then the advisory council, which would serve to say, you know what, these are the way... these are the kinds of things that we're looking for in Halloween that would include the whole community. So the neighborhood associations, the Chamber of Commerce, the Visitors Bureau, and the other service organizations. You will see some strategies for revenue generation listed there, and this would be revenue that would be gained by the city as a result of Halloween. It includes increasing the price of vendor booths, and increasing the number of vendors that you have, licensing your merchandise, and securing a vendor contract to merchandise, t-shirts, and whatever else that you want to put your Halloween logo on. And of course, the coordination and development of additional auxiliary events that involve the community. And, you know, some of the ideas that they've come up with, my favorite is the pumpkin pancake breakfast that kicks off Halloween at about nine o'clock in the morning. Jonathan came up with a great idea for the Ichabod Crane 5K race. You just created things like that that give the community a chance to participate in Halloween, and make it more of a day-long event. And of course, something that we hope would stretch into a two-day event. I've also listed on there a nominal admission charge for partygoers. I'm not recommending necessarily a fence, although I will tell you, every private promoter that we talk with, the first question out of their mouth was, how big is the area that you have fenced off? And when we say, well, we don't have it fenced, they say, well, how are you charging admission? Well, we're not charging admission. Well, how are you making money? Well, we're really not. And it really hasn't been the goal, but under Plan Two, revenue generation is the key objective there. Okay? So then the third option that you'll see there is the Halloween Street Festival under direction of a private events promoter. And I have spoken with about six different promoters, and included in this packet is information from the one that we have stuck with the longest, Spectra Entertainment. And they do about 22 festivals across the Midwest each year, most of their festivals center around music. And they have done some Halloween-related festivals as well. And we've had so far a very good working relationship with them, they're very interested in coming and doing a side evaluation, and giving you an idea of what that would incur. Again, this would be a contract with the city. This means the city saying Halloween is ours. It's not for me to say that that's what you should do, I'm just providing you with what the options are. But again, these festival promoters, the private ones, are typically used to working with city coordinators, with city event coordinators, or city managers of some kind. And of course, you know, one of the great reasons to take on a private events coordinator is that you don't incur a lot of the cost associated with running a festival, especially personnel costs, liability costs. It also gives you a chance to sort of set out specific contracts for security and cleanup that the festival promoter has been responsible for incurring, rather than the city. And, you know, these are just, again, more ways in which you can offset the cost that Halloween actually is causing, so. And one of the questions that the private events promoter has asked us is a consideration of an alternative location for Halloween. So that is also out there on the table as well, and you'll see that listed in the student material. Towards the end, you'll see a tentative schedule of Halloween events, this is what Jonathan and I have worked on. This is a feasible schedule for all three of these options here. So it gives you an idea of things that we could even accomplish this year. It would be a lot of hard work to get this together, but we do think that we can accomplish a fair amount of change to Halloween this year. And we don't expect city council, if they do make a decision on who actually owns Halloween, to make great changes in this coming year, but we do stand ready as a resource for you. You'll also see developed there a list of the sponsorship levels. And again, I really want to stress to you, the key to a successful Halloween is in the sponsorships, and it is time for the local businesses who make money off of Halloween to step that up. And of course, some creative opportunities with that are, you know, instead of sponsoring a stage or a band, sponsor a police officer, sponsor a cleanup crew, sponsor the barricades. You know, there are really creative ways in which our local businesses can get involved in helping to make Halloween something that's safe, something that doesn't incur a tremendous amount of cost for the city, and something that provides the community with something to do. Okay. So in a nutshell, those are your three options. The final thing I want to say to you and to the community is, this is a time to really think creatively about what we want this event to be. It's here, it's been here for 30 years. I don't think it's going anywhere unless you guys decide to not block off the street anymore. And I don't see that happening. What really what I want this to be is a call to action to the community to say, you know what, this is our event, this is our community, what can we do? What does my Halloween look like? What would it take for me to come down to Halloween? What would it take for me to bring my family down there? We know from a tourism standpoint that it's really about community development, and when you pull together something great that your community takes part in, and visitors will take notice, and they'll follow suit. So we look forward to assisting you in whatever way that we can. I'm going to leave these materials with you, and then I understand I'm to return next Monday?
Actually, next Monday, the next committee meeting.
The next committee meeting.
Which is, next Monday's a holiday, right? So it would be when? When is it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. I'll be returning at some Tuesday in the near future.
Next Tuesday, the 29th. Next Tuesday.
And in the meantime, if any of you have any questions, you can drop me an email or give us a call at the office, and we'll be happy to help you.
Thank you, Paige. Are there other communications? Reports and communications from other elected officials, Mayor Abel.
Just wanted to bring to the table the continuing saga of the $25,000 Cultural Arts Grant for Arts West. We've been assigned a new program officer, and they ask new questions. One of the things they wanted was a copy of our title insurance, to see that we owned the building free and clear. We sent that in, it was dated 2005, so they said, oh, update it. So we had to hire the attorney that did the original closing for it, and in that, he found that we had received a real estate tax bill for Arts West, indeed, we had paid it, but there was also a second parcel that was not paid, because they didn't mail it to us, they mailed it to the Nazarene Church, who did not contact us, who did not forwarded it to us. So until Thursday, I didn't know if this bill existed. Of course, it has a 10 percent penalty on it. We will file to try to get that waived, since we were notified, of course, the treasurer's... county treasurer's office doesn't offer much encouragement that they'll waive it, but it's $7,853, which is, of course, not appropriated, so I had asked the clerk of council to add it to the current first reading of the appropriation ordinance that you have before you later tonight. We can't, of course, follow up and file the title thing until that's paid, so that the title report is clear of that encumbrance. And that, of course, we can't ask for the real estate taxes to be waived through the Ohio... real estate by as long as we owe any real estate taxes on it. So we'll leave it to you as to whether or not we want to do that tonight, or call a special session next Tuesday and get it out of the way. But meanwhile, it delays the $25,000 project, the Arts West. And that was all I had.
That's quite a parcel, a separate parcel.
There were two parcels, of course, the auditor's office, you know, we all know that, this is the first time we've ever paid taxes on it.
We paid all the bills we got.
We paid the ones we had, but maybe they're saying we shouldn't have, it was too low, it was only $3,300, so.
And there you are.
There we are. Okay. That's the quick story.
Anything else, Rick?
No.
City auditor?
No report.
No report. Ordinances for third reading. 04807, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII, Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.22 Parking Meter Ranks, Regulations, and Penalties. Member Flowers.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 04807.
Second.
This is an ordinance that is extending the meter time for handicap parking spaces in the Uptown area, from the two hours it is right current... right now, to four hours. It was originally discussed after meeting with Barb from the Athens City Commission of Disabilities, that they wanted to extend the meters to three hours, giving that extra hour for unloading and traveling time for persons of disabilities... with disabilities, excuse me. And in mentioning that, and talking with the captain pile from the police department, he had noted that four hours would be better, coordinated with the two-hour rounds that the parking enforcement conducted, and that it would be near impossible to do a three-hour enforcement on a meter. Therefore, we then changed it to four hours on those parking meters, which is what ordinance we have tonight, extending the handicap to four hours.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4907, did I miss something?
Well, I thought someone was saying something, so half of us voted, half of us didn't. I know, I didn't hear very well.
Okay.
And some voted in syncopation.
We aren't quite up to our usual rhythm yet, are we? Would you like me to call the vote again?
Would you please?
Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 4807?
Aye.
Those opposed? Boy, that's the way I like council to speak up. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 4907, an ordinance to rezone property on East State Street from an M-zone to a B3-zone. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 04907.
Second.
And I'll be clear that we are talking about rezoning a property way out on East State Street that is not the lower end of Court Street. And this is...
You're not slipping something in here, is that what you're...
This is the small piece of property out near the end of the bike path, and the rezoning will allow the... if anything is built on it, will allow it to be more aligned with the rest of the properties out in that part of East State Street. And I think that the plan recommends, and the planning commission will be recommending, that we look at that entire M-zone and consider a larger area, but right now, it's just that one parcel.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4907?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5007, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands?
Mr. President, Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 5007.
Second.
This ordinance appropriates $13,000 to the sewer fund. A pump in the sewer line went bad, was going bad, and the sewer department fronted the money to order one, to get it installed as quickly as possible. This is simply replacing those funds that have already been expended. I think, ask the mayor, has this been installed and is working now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. It's done, so we need to pay for it.
Further discussion on ordinance 50. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinances for second reading. 05107, an ordinance authorizing street painting and repairs. Ordinance 5207, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII, Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.26 Regulation of City Parking Garage. Ordinance 5307, an ordinance amending ordinance 014406, authorizing staffing levels for intermittent, temporary, seasonal, full, and part-time employees. Member Sands?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to table ordinance 5307.
Second.
We introduced this and discussed it two weeks ago, there were some questions raised, and after talking to the mayor, the auditor, and the personnel director, it was a consensus that instead of looking at this on a department-by-department basis, we should review the entire ordinance and staffing levels that deal with this. So the mayor and the personnel director have already begun that process. As we move through it, we'll discuss it more in council.
Motion and second to table ordinance 5307. Further discussion on tabling of the ordinance. All those in favor of tabling the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been tabled. Ordinance 5407, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a community development block grant for calendar year 2008, which is federal fiscal year 2007. Ordinance 5507, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for the fiscal year 0708 Drug Abuse Resistance Education Dare Law Enforcement Grant. Ordinance 5607, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an emergency shelter grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Development, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Goodworks, Inc. 05707, an ordinance authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the USDOT Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws, as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized area and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant application approval for the period from January 1, '08 through December 31, '08. You would... Member Patterson?
Shouldn't that be '09? Oh, no, that's the end of that. Got it. Sorry. I wanted to figure two years.
You just want to amend that ordinance, so I get to...
No, no, no.
Okay. Further...
That's basically a bus contract, right?
That is.
Right.
Yes, it is. Member Wild?
Did you want to say that over again?
No. I'm not doing that again. Other comments? Ordinance 5807, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $355,000 of water system revenue notes, tenth 2007 renewal by the city of Athens, Ohio, for the purpose of paying litigation costs, and renewing notes previously issued for the purpose, and declaring an emergency. Yes? I have been notified by the clerk that we may need suspension for this. Is that correct?
Oh, right. Yeah.
Auditor Heck.
Sorry. This is due June 2nd. Sorry, this is our second reading.
Mr. President, at this time, I move we suspend the rules for ordinance 5807.
Second.
As the auditor mentioned, this renewal, this payment that is allowed by this renewal of bond is due...
June 2nd.
June 2nd.
I think we talked about that in committee, that...
Yes, we did, if I remember. Is there further discussion on suspension of the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules on 05807?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 5807.
Second.
Again, in order to make a timely payment on this debt.
Further discussion, member Wild?
And the bond rate, if I'm reading correctly, is 3.6?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Any other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5807?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Under ordinances for first reading. 05907, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to Washington on Saturday, September 8th, '07, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the First Annual Business Fair. Member Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll remind council that this is an ordinance for the Student Senate. Amanda S. Stock, who came and spoke to us, I believe, a couple of times, and we discussed it in committee, about, is she here? Oh, there she is, okay. She came, and we gave her some feedback, as far as the location that she had originally was, South Court, between President and Mulberry. And it was suggested that maybe, since this is a business fair, that we move it more up into the Uptown area, where more the businesses are. And she has since met with Ray, and they've discussed closing down the portion that we have here in the ordinance up on Court Street. Also, another request from council was to secure a rain date location, and she has since done that, also as securing the ballroom for if there is a rain date.
Baker Center Ballroom?
Yes, that's correct. So not in the basement of the parking garage. Other things to note is that the event is from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., but since this is a new event, we're giving two hours prior and after the event for setup and tear-down. And that's on Saturday, September 8th.
Further discussion on ordinance 59. Carol?
I just would like to compliment Amanda on working with the chamber. I know that was kind of a long-going process, but I know that they felt strongly about the Uptown location, that for the businesses, that made so much more sense for them to participate, and for the students to get the feel of going uptown, as opposed to staying on campus. So I appreciate your going to the chamber and working it out, and then following up with Ray Hazlett. I think this is a better event, and so, way to go.
Member Sands?
Mr. President, I also want to commend Ms. Eslock in Student Senate for, first of all, sponsoring this event, which I think is a wonderful step forward in relations between the business community and the students, but also for listening to the concerns of city council and members of the business community, and changing the location. Second part is, in my copy of the ordinance...
It's supposed to be here, I will change it.
Okay. Thank you.
The ordinance I used.
We will recognize that as a typo.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? I believe I saw member Bishop?
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify, so you said two hours before and after, so the event itself is then from 1:00 to 3:00?
Yes.
Two hours, okay. And I also want to say, this is very ambitious, and this is excellent work to put this together.
Member Wild?
Yeah, it's going to go...
Yeah, it's going to go through three readings, and after three readings, if you still need help to get the word out, let us know, too.
Thank you much. Ordinance 6007, I think I'm up to, an ordinance closing portions of Court Street and Washington Street on Friday, June 22, July 27, and August 17 for a cruise in. Member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an annual street closing ordinance that I was so happy to do last year and doing again this year, closing down portions of Court and Washington. But I would like to say at this time that we might be amending this ordinance should I find out from the organizer that they do not need that much space. I know that last year, I believe that street was closed down, and I can't remember any necessary, having that portion, any necessity of having that area closed down on Washington Street. So, I'm going to find out from Mr. Elman before next reading to see if he really does need that additional streaks. It'd be nice to keep it open if he does not, for traffic purposes.
Other comments? Member Wild.
Will we have to suspend rules for this, for the dates?
When is the first one?
June 22?
I don't see an emergency clause.
So, we need to amend it for emergency clause?
Yes.
You could do that now.
I can wait till next time, too, Ray. Don't need to...
You would think that.
Well, that way, if I'm going to amend it two times and just do it all in one reading.
Okay.
You may need to amend, suspend, and adopt. So, as long as...
No, why not?
As long as you have the members present, it's not a problem. Yes?
I guess I'd like to suggest we could do the emergency clause now, because if that part of Washington Street isn't needed, the Service Safety Director, at his discretion, could not close it.
Okay. Well, I move to amend ordinance Oh, 6007.
Second.
For the reasons pointed out by member Phillips.
And an emergency clause to be added. Further comments? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 6007 has been amended and read for the first time.
Thanks, Debbie.
Ordinance 6107, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII Traffic Code, Section 7.04.40 Possession, Possessions, I'm sorry, and Parades Required. Member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, this time, table ordinance Oh, 6107.
Second.
The reason for tabling this ordinance at this time is, in discussing this further with Ray Hazlett and Andy Stone, this may be something that's more of an administrative issue and maybe a policy done by the police department as opposed to actually codified language. So, I'm going to discuss it more in discussing committee next week and see how council wants to proceed on what was submitted from the police department.
Number Wild.
So, some of the language will come out and some will stay in, I assume?
Yes, we'll still be doing a change to this part of the code, but I don't think that it's necessary that all of this go into the code.
Okay.
Motion in second to table ordinance 6107. All in favor of tabling the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been tabled. Ordinance 6207, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase a two-ton dump truck for the Street Department. Member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. As was discussed in committee last week, at the request of Andy Stone, the Director of the Streets Department, they are in need of a new truck. It's the two-ton dump truck, vehicle number 116. As was provided to me from the mayor this evening is the vehicle history that was passed around to you just a couple of minutes ago. This is a 1992 truck, and it has been stated that they, that it needs replaced as recommendation from the Street Department.
Further discussions? Ordinance 6207. Member Wild.
This looks like a pretty expensive truck. Is it, what's a two-ton truck? Is that the normal price or something like that?
I'm sorry?
Is that the normal price for something like that? $105,000?
I believe so.
Okay.
Well, it does have a stainless steel bed in it and snowplow for, and then the spreading things that you need to get for that. So, that adds about maybe $15,000 to $20,000 to the cost.
Okay.
Further discussion on ordinance 62. Ordinance 6307, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance and the 2007 interfund transfer ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move that we suspend the rules for ordinance 6307.
Second.
The reason for suspension is because included in this ordinance is an appropriation for the $7,853 that is necessary for payment of taxes on Arts West. As the mayor stated, we must pay these taxes to get a clear title. We need a clear title to complete the grant application for $25,000 to do some needed work at Arts West, and we need that clear title to file for tax exemption and hopefully recover most of these funds.
We have a motion in second to consider ordinance 6307 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion on suspension only? Although there are other items in the ordinance that I'm sure we'll discuss. All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 6307.
Second.
This ordinance in Section 1 has several, would approve several actions. The first one is appropriating $11,000 to the Recreation Fund. This is a donation from the Roger Ames family, isn't it, I believe? Roger Ames himself, for funds for, to upgrade the Dalton Field, the baseball fields at West State Street. The second part of Section 1 is indeed to appropriate the money for the taxes at Arts West. And the third portion of Section 1 is to appropriate $151,637 to the TIF Fund, the East State Street TIF Fund. We have received from the county auditor notification that this is the amount that has been collected to this point, this year, for the TIF Fund, and we, our appropriation is not sufficient to receive that money right now. So, this is simply making room for us to receive that money in the TIF Fund. And then we have $3,000 to the East State Street Debt Fund. That's the cost for our bond, council. Actually, there's $2,000 for East State Street and $1,000 for the parking garage bond, which we will be discussing soon, I'm sure. And then we have a Section 2, which is amending the interfund transfer ordinance, which is simply moving the funds from the TIF Fund, that $151,637, from the East State Street TIF Fund into the East State Street Debt Fund. And then finally, Section 3 is appropriating $83,000, again, to the East State Street Debt Fund to accompany $68,000, which is already there, to equal the 1,000, 100,000, 51, 151,637 that we are receiving from the TIF. So, this is, a lot of that is just simply bookkeeping to allow us to accept the money that is earned by the TIF agreement and then to expend it for the debt fund, which is what we intend to do.
Other comments on ordinance 6307? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Resolution for first reading, R. 0907, a resolution indicating the services the City of Athens will provide for the proposed annexation of approximately 45.612 acres on East State Street as requested by the annexation petitioner and declaring an emergency. Member Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to consider the resolution under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that this is an expedited type, too. We have very little time. Our state legislature gave us an, well, to my way of thinking, not a reasonable amount of time to accomplish this first action without declaring an emergency, public health and safety, and suspending the rules. But here we're doing it.
Motion in second to consider resolution Oh, 907 under suspension of council rules.
Aye.
Is there further discussion on the suspension? Member Bishop.
Suspension on the suspension? No.
Suspension only at this point. All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended. Member Bain.
Mr. President, resolution Oh, 907 has states that we will be providing water sewer service in accordance with a development agreement not yet finalized, police and fire protection upon annexation. This will be 42.6 and some more acres on East State Street in Canaan Township if the city accepts said annexation. The second part of this activity on the city's part and the council's part will be to have a second ordinance and also to hammer out the development agreement. And last week, we had Attorney Meek brought us three maps, and we were able to see what exactly the space was. The first one was a proposed subdivision split that was showing the two tracts of land where the medical building would be, the acres from, that are included in the annexation area, and the map that will be, the flood limit, showing the contrast between the area to be zoned business and the other area to be zoned open space, although this will not do it. We have a better idea. 45 acres is a lot of acres, and I personally was concerned, and I was happy to see this as a first effort. So, now we know at least what the space looks like out there.
Second.
And that's it. And I didn't move to, I did not move to do it. Oh, how terrible. I don't know if I will be able to do, okay, I would like to move that we adopt R. 0907.
Second.
So busy thinking about what I was going to say.
For all the reasons that you've already moved.
Let's hear them again. I want to hear them again.
Oh, I probably could have.
Number Bishop.
I know we've kind of touched on this a couple of times. And my only concern, not with this particular person, but in general, how things are set out. Basically, it promises that we'll provide water and sewer and fire.
Police.
And police. So, we're basically agreeing, if we pass it, agreeing to provide those, and then secondarily, after we hammer out the development agreement. So...
We're basically saying we will provide those if we annex.
Right.
In the second ordinance.
Yeah, but as a condition of annexation, the condition will be that the owner pays for these services, right?
Oh, of course.
Yes, but I'm just saying, I wish there were a way that it didn't seem like, you know, we agree to things upfront before they, so I don't know if there's a way to add that in there, or...
And I could state in the past, we'd say all appropriate services, and that was it, and it was, you know, pretty much the same thing.
Well, what I'm saying is at the, at the, to charge the expenses to the owner. That's all I'm saying. Because we're agreeing to provide it without an agreement on who's going to pay. That's the only thing that, in general, concerns me, not about this particular group, but in general about agreements of this type. But then we get stuck having to hammer out something later.
The new expedited annexation process...
Yeah, I wish there were a way to just put it in upfront.
...is striking all of us from the log. Member Wild.
The process, if I understand correctly, this is going to go to the county commissioners, and they will release it. Then we're going to see an ordinance about the actual annexation. In theory, we're going to have a development agreement in place by that time, I assume.
Okay.
And that's where the, that's where the information would come on who pays for what, I think. Is that correct?
That's where it'll come, yes.
Yes, okay. So, I understand what you're saying is we'd like to put this a little bit further in this ordinance, but again, this is an expedited system, or rather, this resolution. And we may want to hear some more.
Well, I was just wondering if you could add something to the resolution.
It's not appropriate at this point.
Okay.
Member Sands. And I think when council finishes their comments, and this nice gentleman makes his, you might understand a little bit more of the steps that it is. Member Sands.
My hand was raised earlier to ask the question, what is the status of this proposed development agreement? Is the administration in...
I think Gary Hunter sent it back and said that he needed, we needed to talk more.
Right.
The question concerned who was paying for what at that point, and you, I think many of you saw that email, so I'm sure it'll be hammered out.
Okay.
Later on.
Other comments from council members? Mr. Nolan, did you wish to speak to this?
No, I think you just answered it. We made a statement. We'll hammer it up in the development agreement, otherwise we won't know.
Ray.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Other comments for the resolution? Are we up to adopting, I believe? All those in favor of adoption of resolution Oh, 907?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been adopted. Next item on our agenda is announcements in other business. Next week's committee meetings, who would like to meet?
Communication.
And keep it in mind that it will be on Tuesday, not Monday.
Tuesday, 7:00 on Tuesday.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. And Halloween will be the major topic.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, Nancy, did you wish to meet?
I just don't know. I mean, I wonder how long it's going to... Well, I have to buy a truck, I think. Maybe we can fit that in, or else we'll wait a week.
Okay. Member Phillips, anything from you?
I don't think I need a committee meeting right now, but I did want to make an announcement. We received a letter from FEMA because FEMA is going through the process of map modernization. They're going to be digitizing the flood rate insurance maps, and there's going to be a public meeting to talk about the scope of the map provisions on Tuesday, June 5, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the public library in the large meeting room. So, June 5, from 1:00 to 3:00, if you're interested in map modernization for the floodplain.
Where is that? Community center?
It's at the library, public library. And I should remind folks that we do have a planning and development committee meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00.
And the main item on that agenda is?
Site plan review.
Number Sands.
Mr. President, I meant to mention, when we were discussing ordinance 5407, that this is an application for CDBG block fund. There will be two public hearings. The first public hearing was actually scheduled for next Monday, before we realized that was a holiday.
It's a holiday?
And it's being rescheduled...
To June 4.
June 4. And let me just add my name at our committee to list some possible...
A long list of committee meetings.
Some possible small things to discuss.
Very good. Member Patterson.
Arts Parks and Recreation to discuss the restroom for the soccer fields.
Member Flowers.
We'll have a transportation committee meeting with the traffic code covering the possessions and parades, and also the connector road site that we looked at on the street tour and that I've emailed you about this week. And if I could make one announcement, and just keeping council up to date on Student Senate's elections last week, Tim Bondville, who we've been working with as, in his position on Student Senate, he was elected president of Student Senate last week, so probably seen a lot more of him.
Member Patterson.
Also, just a note for council to mark their calendars for June 19. At 9:30 in the morning is going to be the Wellhead Protection Training for Businesses at the Community Center, and council is specifically invited to that, and I'll be reminding you right up until it happens. But the Water Department and the EPA would very much like for council to be involved in that.
Good. Any other announcements in other business? Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative item or city service that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council tonight?
I would like to ask for...
Please, what we would ask you to do is come forward so everybody can hear you. Otherwise, you're not heard. If you would state your name, and address, or your affiliation, and we give you three minutes.
My name is Pamela Craftry, and I'm employed at Sigma Phi Epsilon, 24 East Washington Street, and... And with the signs that they put in front of our house, we can't load or unload from the house. We are a student-affiliated fraternity, but yet we're not allowed to load or unload from our house. They put up the signs, I mean, I know that city personnel have to park through there, but don't we have any leeway to move out or move in?
Ms. Crabtree, I guess what we'd ask is that if we could ask the administration to review what new signs or new procedures up and see if there is anything, because?
You don't know right now?
Yeah, of course, off the top of our head, when I leave here tonight, I'm parked pretty much in front of your place, so I'll?
Right.
I'll take note of it myself, but if we could give the members an opportunity to see what you're talking about and ask the administration to look at it, I think that would probably be the best way for us to go forward.
We're harassed repeatedly by the meter people just loading or unloading stuff to work in the yard or groceries or anything like that. I mean, you're not allowed to stop there long enough to unload or load, you know, it's just, it's unreasonable.
We'll try to take a look at it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming to us.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council tonight? Item number eleven on our agenda tonight is an executive session where we are going to be going out of the sunshine to discuss a possible land acquisition. Afterwards, we will come out of executive session, and the only other thing we will do is an adjournment. There is quite a few people before us tonight that probably wishes to ask council questions. When that clock says eight-thirty, I'm going to ask that you wrap up and leave and allow council to do its final act of business, but other than that, we stand adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know why I always do this. If I didn't have member while, I would have a problem with this. Executive session to include the auditor and the mayor. Member while?
Aye.
Bishop?
Aye.
Bain?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Sands?
Aye.
We're there.
Aye.
Thank you.